Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Here. So please stand for the Fledge of All Agents and then I'll give the opening remarks. So I wanted to make two comments today. The first is, I wanted to note the passing of a great American. Of course, General Colin Powell died yesterday. He dedicated his whole life in the service of his country. He served in combat in Vietnam. He was a four-star general, of course. He received the Bronze Star and was also recipient of the Purple Heart. He advised four presidents. And he was the first African-American Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff and the first African-American Secretary of State. So an amazing career, an amazing public servant. He was a colleague of my uncle's in the military. I never heard anything but positive things about him and his leadership. And I thought it was appropriate to have our flags at half-staff, of course, but also to have a moment of silence for him here today. Thank you for that. And I also wanted to make one more note of congratulations to Matt Kuzey, who is named our new City Attorney. You'll be seeing Matt a lot more frequently now, who has been our interim City Attorney, sitting behind us, but now is the permanent City Attorney. He'll be here advising the City Council every week, and we appreciate his guidance. He may have left the room for a minute, but we'll give him a round of applause anyway. Boy, he's not starting his first meeting off very well, is he?
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items here today. Please turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate.
Items six through nine can be considered together for Hartwood Estates located northwest of 151st and Pine Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Please communication in opposition. Item six and seven are ordinances to rezone this property from R4 District and MU District to R4 District and MU District. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item nine, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items number six, seven, eight, and nine is today. The applicant, please.
My name's Joe Flaxbeard. I'm with Lamper Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road. On behalf of the applicant, also joined by Bart Emanuel with Applied Underwriters in the audience today. We're here with Hartwood Estates, some rezoning subdivision agreement and a final plat. These are consistent with the master plan that was put together for the Hartwood Preserve, formerly known as West Farm and South Farm. We did receive the letter in opposition from the neighbor. We're through relation to some silt and runoff issues that he's experienced, some through construction here. I've met with this gentleman in the past during the original overlap grading, and then Bart Emanuel with Applied Underwriters met with him, I think, just yesterday, most recently. We understand what his concerns are. We're going to help get him some, we're going to give him some facts around how we've rerouted stormwater to basically address the issue there. So, and Bart and his company have committed to doing any yard cleanup, anything that this guy deems is fair to address the issue here in the letter. So, I wanted to tackle that one, and then just, I'm here for any other questions, and Bart's available as well. Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joe, thanks, and Bart, who's in the audience, too. I've talked with Mr. Tremblay, who wrote the letter of opposition, and have also spoken with Bart, and understand that they are trying to address the issue and work it out. So, knowing that it's not worked out today, it's in a work in progress. So, I appreciate Bart and his team and Joe for their work on this. And with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through nine are approved, seven to zero. Items 10 through 13 can be considered together for state and highway 133 addition located northwest of Blair High Road and State Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to GI District. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve especially use permit to allow communication services in the GI District. Item 13, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 10, 11, 12, and 13 is today. I'll take the applicant, please.
Good afternoon. Mark Norman with the Greater Omaha Chamber, 808 Conagra Drive, Suite 400, Omaha, 68102. Again, working with the Greater Omaha Chamber here. I'm on behalf of the client to answer any questions you may have. We've been working very closely with the city, the Planning Department and Public Works on this project. We feel it's a great project for the northwest part of Omaha. And I think that, again, just here to answer any questions you may have, I'll ask your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Mr. Anderson.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, here in support and to make myself available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 13 are approved, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve a community redevelopment area for the F Street to Big and Little Papillion Creek, as described on the agenda.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Get this set up a little bit here. Okay, this item on the agenda asks the City Council to designate an area of Omaha as a community redevelopment area. And you see on the map here, these are existing designated CRAs within the city of Omaha, primarily in the older parts of Omaha, east of 72nd Street. These are areas where we want to encourage new economic development, redevelopment of some of our older areas. The primary reason, of course, for CRA designation is that it opens up an area for the eligibility to apply for the TIF program. It's tax increment financing, an incentive that we use to encourage redevelopment of older portions of Omaha, areas where we'd like to see additional development. The request for this study came from Grunwald Mechanical Contractors and Engineering. They asked that we conduct the study because they are interested in developing a new facility on a new site. And their financial analysis tells them that they may need the TIF program support to develop their site to its full potential. If I may. The site that caused us to, that they're interested in and that caused us to launch the study is this long vacant parcel here. Interestingly enough, it's immediately adjacent to another vacant parcel that is located within an existing CRA and that the council recently approved just a few months ago for the Outlook Nebraska Development. To kind of give you another perspective and put it in context, the site Grunwald is interested in is in yellow. The lavender sites or colors indicate existing CRA designations. And the red boundary is the area that we are recommending for designation today, with today's action. And as you can see, it kind of fills in a bit of a gap in the map. Okay. The criteria for designation is established in state community development law. The law refers to areas for a CRA as being blighted and substandard. There are very detailed and lengthy definitions of both terms, blighted and substandard. Those are laid out in detail, along with the criteria for them, in the report that you have in your packets, a report that, incidentally, is also available to the public online. For an area to be designated as a CRA, it must comply with the requirements of both definitions, blighted and substandard. Further complicating matters is that the blighted definition has a part A and a part B, and you must comply with both parts there. It gets rather involved, but I think it's laid out very clearly in the, in the report. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at that. It is laid out in great detail. Some of the data that we use is quantifiable, US census data. Some is a bit more qualitative data. That's data related to the condition of the area, conditions of the buildings, conditions of the infrastructure. There, we use windshield surveys and data from the assessor's records to look at building condition data and the condition of the infrastructure. To jump ahead a little bit, the report shows how the study area meets both definitions. Our department began by looking at two entire census tracts and found that the entire census tracts, both of them qualified for CRA designation. We then narrowed the study down geographically to two census block groups, one block group in each of those two census tracts. And again, both the block groups were deemed eligible for designation. Ultimately, the area within the red boundary there, and also as Exhibit B, I think it is in your packets or in the report, is a bit smaller than those two block groups. What we try to do in drawing these boundaries is pull in as many properties as possible that we think could be redeveloped and result in jobs and economic development while trying to exclude well-established neighborhood areas, particularly single-family neighborhoods. In terms of the census data, the quantitative data has five parts to it. And for an area to be eligible, it only needs to meet one of them. In this case, we're meeting four, and there could be an argument that it meets all five. One is population change. The area has not exceeded a 5% population growth. Indeed, most of the area has seen a population decline. Per capita income is lower than the city's per capita income overall. Unemployment needs to be greater than 120% of the statewide unemployment rate, and it is for all of the geographical areas. Average age of structures needs to be greater than 40 years, and again, it is. And then the last one is, you have subdivided platted lands that have sat undeveloped for 40 years. And if we had multiple parcels, that one would be a yes. With one, we, it's arguable either way. But again, we only need to meet one of these. In terms of the qualitative data, that's basically the condition of the built environment. There are not a lot of buildings that are in a badly deteriorated condition, but most are at best in an average or fair rating for their condition or lower. Many are utilitarian metal skin pole barn buildings that really don't represent the highest and best use of the properties. And I think it's the infrastructure and its condition that is particularly important in this instance. The infrastructure in the area is really pretty old and is considerably substandard. Street lane widths are substandard, particularly for heavy truck traffic. You can see there's no sidewalks, and this is typical pretty much throughout that area. The storm drainage system in particular is quite inadequate. In conclusion, we, we as a department, found that both definitions are met by this area and that it is eligible for CRA designation, and we recommend that you make that designation.
Thank you. Thanks for providing that background. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve a major amendment to a large project special use permit in a GI District located at 5701 South 85th Circle, 5639, 5711, 5805, 5810, and 5820, South 86th Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Mac Brandt with Kimberly Horn, 767 Eustis Street, St. Paul, Minnesota. Here with Larry Wright from the Tribal Council, here to answer any questions, give you a brief introduction to the project. You've seen this project several years ago in 2017, and again, I think the council approved it in 2018. There were some financial issues that was delayed, and they did an extension in 2020, and another extension in 2021 because of the delay with COVID. During the time with COVID, though, they discovered that the health clinic actually could double in size from 60,000 to 125,000 square feet, thus requiring a parking garage. That's why we're before you here today to ask for an amendment to the agreement to provide a parking facility for this project.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I'll just say before I call for a motion that it's gratifying to see the project moving forward and that you stayed true to it and stayed committed to it. And not only is it moving forward, but it's doubling in size, right? That's, I think, a very positive thing and definitely needed in our community. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16 and 17 can be considered together for property located at 5020 Grand Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Resolutions to approve special use permits to allow large group living and emergency residential care in R1 District.
Public hearing and vote today on number 16 and 17. I'll take the applicant first, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. With me I have Ashley Kuhn, President of Blair Freeman, 460...
4616 Dodge Street.
4616 Dodge Street. We have other members of the project team here as well, in case there are questions that Ashley and I cannot answer. I'll do a bit of an overview of the project, and then Ashley will talk to you about the many meetings that the team has had with the neighborhood and the responses to concerns that were brought up, and in particular, some additional measures taken around security for the facility and between the facility and the neighborhood. Let me just start by saying this facility is really a unique, one-of-its-kind, first-of-its-kind facility in the nation, where it brings together on one site behavioral health, formal education, residential, recreation services, and also includes working with the families of the youths who are in the facility out in the community to really try and relieve pressure on the juvenile justice system, reduce recidivism, and change the outcome of the way that we address juvenile justice in some cases for the better through a comprehensive continuum of care type of services. Really, a unique project, and in my opinion, we're fortunate to have it coming potentially here to Omaha. To the basics of the project, this is about a 10-acre site. It was formerly a church. The facility will use the church building and two new buildings totaling about 40,000 square feet. The use permits that are before you are for large group living. For the residential part of the facility, which will accommodate up to 22 youths between 12 and 18 years of age, and emergency residential, which is really what covers the treatment, behavioral health treatment part of the facility. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley to talk again about community outreach and security. And we're certainly then happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So I briefly just wanted to talk through how our community engagement portion went. It was very important to my company, as well as the project, that we get the neighborhood's opinion and that we truly take those into factors as we were designing the project. First, I wanted to walk through what we did in terms of community engagement. We kind of came to a little bit of a unique situation with COVID. But we started with an email that went out to what we were told was the head of the Neighborhood Association. Unfortunately, we're not able to get anybody from Neighborhood Association. That went out in February. In March, we then sent out postcards to the surrounding neighborhood, just letting people know that there was a project coming, that we would be in contact, and that we wanted to collect any information that could be provided in terms of emails and how folks wanted to be communicated with. At this time, we did ask, did people feel comfortable coming to meetings? The consensus was that they would prefer to wait further into the summer for COVID to get a little bit lighter before that they started in-person meetings. We then sent out another letter at March 29th, just letting them know again that there was something coming out. On this letter, it had my cellphone number, gave a link to our website, that just again gave our contact information to let people know that something was coming. We then started the community engagement meetings. We had one on July, excuse me, July 14th, July 27th, August 23rd, and September 23rd. So we've had, I have to take that back, we've had three to date. With that, we came to a list of things that the neighbors were concerned about and things that they had questions about. So we came up with a large list. This was the list. Green kind of shows where we came up to a consensus and where our project was able to make some changes or bend in terms of the neighborhood. Red was just something that couldn't be done, and yellow were things that we would need to coordinate with Public Works or Planning Department to see if something could happen. One of them that I want to point out in particular was that there was a concern that there was a gap in between our two buildings that would allow possibly for a child to run if they were being taken from one building to another. We did listen to that, take that in consideration, redesigned the site so that there was a fence line there that was protective of that. We did also, the neighborhood had a serious concern about security and whether or not there was going to be a patrol that would go around the neighborhood. Originally, our organization wasn't sure if that was the correct answer. The neighborhood pushed for it, so we did agree that from 4:00 PM to 8:00 AM, we would do security patrol and then revisit as a group between Neighborhood Association and this organization after six months. And so, just wanted to let you know the community engagement. Also, again, wanted to let you know what the list of concerns was for the neighbors. I did have pictures of what the facility looked like. The goal was really to make it look residential, allow for it to look more like a school when you drove past. And so, we've just got some quick photos to show what the campus will look like, interior and exterior.
And you can see through these photos, I know I'm going through them fairly quickly, but you can really see that, again, the continuum and the comprehensive services. You've got recreation in this one. You had dining, education in the first photo, and then here's an example of a sleeping room as well. So again, you can really see the multi-use of this facility, which is really the hallmark of the facility, to provide all of these services in a comprehensive way. And then, as I mentioned before, also to include the outreach in the community with the family of the youth who are in the facility as well. So I think that's it for us. We're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
And then I believe we've got two others that want to speak.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other proponents, please. Mr. McMorris.
Good afternoon, council. I am Kenny McMorris. I'm here with Charles Drew Health Center, 2915 Grant Street. Just here to really express our support for moving forward with this. One of the roles that Charles Drew will play, we talk a lot about integrated healthcare and access to mental and behavioral health support. One of the things that we do, we are what's considered a federally qualified health center. We provide medical, dental, behavioral health support primarily in North Omaha but surrounding communities. Demographically, we serve roughly about 13,000 individuals, close to about 40,000 encounters, and 11 service delivery sites in North Omaha. We pride ourselves on making sure that every individual that wants access to healthcare gets access to healthcare. So the role that we hope to play and will intend to play with this project is, what was indicated, that there was going to be a clinic. And so, as part of that clinic, relationships matter, trust matters, and we know that when young people get access to treatment, the consistency with those providers become important. And so, our job will be to be a part of that. We provide the healthcare services to the young people while they're there with the option and the opportunity to continue continuity of care with services beyond their time within the facility. As part of the community aspect of it, the site will be open, and the clinic site will be open to the broader community. So we'll provide those services to the community. And there's never been a time more important than right now. We're dealing with COVID-19, the mental health and the anguish and the anxiety that many of the residents in our community are experiencing. Access to quality care is so important. So, we think this is going to be a revolutionary project, as was indicated before. And Charles Drew will play a role in making sure that every individual in our community gets access to care, along with the young people that are going through therapy and treatment.
Thank you. And thank you for what you do at Charles Drew, especially during this time of the pandemic.
Thank you.
Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Ken Zuhar. I'm a pediatrician and addiction medicine physician. I work at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. I've been involved with caring for youth in the juvenile justice system and youth that we are considering in treatment since 2012. I started working in, started working at the Youth Rehabilitation Treatment Centers in Geneva and Kearney, as well as the Hastings Facility, and then came to Nebraska, the University of Nebraska, to work in this facility. I continue to work with youth in the juvenile justice system as part of my care. And so, I definitely have seen the youth that this facility will serve. I became a partner in this project early on. And my experience in treating youth in those facilities lent my services and my consultation to building this from the ground up, not only the facility, but the treatment services that this facility will provide. The work I've done has also allowed me to witness the difficulties that so many families face when they struggle to provide the care that their children need within the community and the community services are not enough. Our state has treatment centers that exist for youth. However, we have so many youth that actually end up leaving our state because the services aren't available because of the severity of their mental health needs. So what this facility would provide is the ability for these youths to be served in the state and in the community. We know that family involvement in care of the youth is so important, and without that, it's impossible for the youth to get better. And when they're out of state, it provides an insurmountable barrier for families to be involved with the care of their youth. That's why I think this facility is so important. Mr. McMorris just pointed out the fact that we are really struggling with youth mental health in this time of the pandemic. And just recent, just today, there was services or statistics released that showed that we've seen an increase in healthy emergencies by 24% for youth that are five to 11 years of age, and by 31% for 12 to 17. We've seen emergency department visits for suspected suicide increased by 51%. And these, again, are the youth that are struggling with the concerns that we would serve in this facility. So many of the youth that we treat struggling with these concerns come from the eastern part of our great city. This speaks to the location of this project. It places the treatment center in the heart of where these families live, work, and enjoy their family and friends. As a result, the families can embrace and come to think of this as their own, a place where they are comfortable, that their kids are going to get, receive great care, and when they can come to engage in that care. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And I don't think I cut your address up front. Could you just provide...
I'm sorry. University of Nebraska Medical Center, 42nd and Dewey, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Watson Hodges, 5208 Laramore Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I have reached out to community leaders, my councilwoman, Juanita Johnson, when I heard about this. My councilwoman, Juanita Johnson, when I heard about this development coming in my neighborhood, I called the mayor's office. I reached out to everyone in my community as far as the Neighborhood Association. No one was aware that this development was coming to our area. There was a stigma that you have to live 300 feet from the development, which is outrageous. A lot of people weren't aware of until I made those phone calls. I'm a senior citizen. I've been living in the community for, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I've been living in the community-
You're doing fine.
-for over 25 years. This is my dream home. It's a senior citizen development right across the street, and I'm concerned with the youth coming to our community. I've opposed it from day one. I submitted a letter to the planning department. I don't know if you all got a chance to review it, July 15th. I asked that copies be sent to everyone. I just want to express my concerns. I've also worked with Ashley, attending the meetings, expressing that I didn't want this development to come into my community. Frankly, now that I'm a senior citizen, when I go to the doctor's office, he asks me, do you feel safe in your home? Yes, I do. But when this development comes to my community, I don't know if I'll be safe to have my door open, my garage door open. Frankly, I'm scared to death. So I just want to express that to all of you, and thank you for hearing my words.
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be some follow-up questions we'll have here in a minute. Next opponent, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Donaldson. I live right across, I mean, I'm the dead-end street. So I live like from here to up there, from them.
And your address, please, just for the record.
4923 North 50th Avenue.
Thanks.
So I've found, in going around in the five houses around me, that there are people who aren't even getting any of this mail, none. There are two people who had no clue anything was going on, not from you guys and not from the city. They knew nothing about it. So I've been trying to catch them up on it. They were very upset and didn't want this. And they're single, and they live by themselves. They had nothing, no clue about it. So I tried to catch them up and do what I could, but I can't vote for them or anything else. But they don't want this. And at this point, since I found out that this was on a computer for God only knows how many years, you guys already had this settled, and we knew nothing about it, and then you guys said what, you would make a decision in November 2nd or something? We have, we never, nobody knew this. Nobody knew any of this. They're going to make a street all the way through? We don't know any of this. What is the deal? Why don't they just come out and tell us everything from the beginning, from the beginning to the end? They should have came out and told us everything, from the beginning to the end, and not just string us along and give us a tad bit of this and a tad bit of that. Because everything affects our property. Everything affects our property. Some are older than I am, and I am a single woman retired in my house. Some affects our property, and we need to know, we need to understand. And yes, the meetings, I go to every one of them. I'm right across the street. I'm right across. I go to every single meeting. I listen, I listen, I listen. I got promises from these people, promises, promises, promises. And then they come back and tell me, I'm sorry, Linda, we can't do that. But you sit in my kitchen, you and your secretary, and you promised me these things, and you tell me you're going to do these things for us, to help us, to make us more safe, or to help us fix our house up just a little bit, and then, I'm sorry, you can't do that. Don't do that to people. Don't promise people things that you can't deliver. Don't do that. And that place where you guys are taking that temple, that worshiping, a church wanted that place. This I know for sure, and wanted to buy it, but guess who outbid them? Give me a break. Just tell us all the truth. Yes, all right. Tell us all the truth at one time, at one time. Spread it out and give us the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And as far as all the, what do you call them, heads of the, what are you looking for? The man of the hour, whoever, to, of the, there's lots of them, but they just didn't get together. And there's lots of them, and we can get them all together to do a meeting. We can get them all together. I mean, I have been walking around neighborhoods and showing them these papers, and these people are not happy. They are not happy about these, this, what's going on over there. These people are truly not happy. I copied my paper about this. They are sick about it. They, first of all, they feel like you guys are desecrating that church. Second of all, they feel like, oh, no, too close to them, too close to the nursing home. There's too many other, other, other buildings outside with huge space. And really, there is. I saw one out on 152nd. But it's okay to do that to the church, but y'all do what you want to do anyway. And this is a done deal, and we already know that anyway. And to cut a street between my house and 50th Avenue, those people are truly upset. They had never wanted a street there. But y'all go ahead. But tell us all the truth, from the beginning, the truth when y'all started this project, from the date, because y'all started it years ago, and give us all that truth. And then you hired these people. This didn't just start now. Give us that truth from then to now. And what they're trying, these two people are trying to tell us now. Give us all of it. Give us all of it. Don't let us just, okay, we gotta, okay, here's another map that we don't understand. No. I want to know what's going on.
Okay.
Simple as that. Thank you so much, and I didn't mean to blow up or anything else, but God bless you all.
Thank you. Thanks for the testimony. Any other opponents here today?
I'm Elizabeth Brockmeyer, and I live at 5122 North 50th Street. I've lived in this neighborhood for 14 years. I'm going to just put this map here. I don't know if the screen's on.
It'll come on.
I just want to point out, I also, I wrote a letter yesterday, and I sent it to the clerk, and I was wondering if you all received it.
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Because I almost, I wasn't going to come, but my fellow neighbors were urging me, so I said, okay, I'm here. I'm not going to be able to say everything I want to say. That's why I wrote the letter. And so many of you have already up here have read it, I hope, and heard some of this. I just want to point out, here's the proposed site. Everything around this area is a house. It's a residence. If this was in your neighborhood, would you want this, right in your backyard? I'm just, I just want you to think about this. I realize that it's close to Ames, in the Ames Corridor, where there's plenty of commercial space. As the group pointed out once before, the green space is ideal. It is centrally located, as the doctor mentioned. It is, you know, close to the families that would be served, but I feel like the scale of the project and all of the services they're trying to provide, I feel like we could do better in a better location. There has to be a better and bigger location for something like this. I really just feel like we're, it's a great idea, it's a great project. I'm not dismissing the need for it and that our young people need this kind of service. I just think maybe the collaboration with other groups in the community, that's a lot of what Linda is trying to express and the other neighbors in the community, is that we don't know anything about what collaboration took place before this project was developed. We don't know who was spoken to in the community as far as other agencies and organizations serving youth, providing these same needs, the mental health treatment, the education, the recreational facilities. So I'm just urging, maybe all of us as a community, let's really like take a look at this and say, is this the best site? Is this the best we can come up with? I've already kind of outlined my points in my letter about why I wouldn't want it in my backyard, and I'm going to say that, not in my backyard, but I, you know, I think every one of us would feel that if this was coming into your backyard. And that's what it feels like, because this is a predominantly residential area. There's no stores, there's no commercial space in here. This has been a buffer for us from the Ames Street Corridor, and we already have a lot of congestion, a lot of traffic, and a lot of issues with that. It's hard to walk in our neighborhood, which is kind of a shame, because it's a really nice area full of residential homes. We should be able to walk safely. None of that mitigation I talked about in that letter has been done, and I would just urge if, as we go forward, please consider that as well, and how we can make more speed bumps, make the area safer, please. It's something that needs to go hand in hand with any future development in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I would like to, at this time, thank Charles Drew Health Center and also UNO, a university medical center, for bringing forth their expertise regarding this facility and taking the time out of your busy schedule to come here and testify that information with this group. For the neighbors there on or about 51st and Grant, I just want to let you know that I too share in your, into your sentiments regarding the how matters. How you were communicated with regarding this project does matter, and I hear what you're saying. I hear everything that you're saying, and I think that as a city, we should do a better job at providing information to citizens all the time. I ran on that platform when I ran my race for city council. I stand for that. I believe in that. And I'm doing everything that I can to ensure that we have the information we know and need concerning things impacting our day-to-day lives. So with that being said, I also would like to thank Blair and Freeman for their consideration of the neighborhood. They did not take your feelings, the neighborhood's feelings, lightly. They did not ignore your concerns. They talked with you guys. They worked out certain conditions. They tried to do things to be more user-friendly. And now they have agreed to provide security from 8:00, from 4:00 PM in the evening to 8:00 AM the following day, and this will be seven days a week. That's what we would have. Now, we know that the youth in District 2, we have a lot of individuals that do need these services, and this is a first of its kind that we're providing these services in Omaha, Nebraska. So I understand that the shock of having this in our community is a little bit different, it's unusual, but we also have to be concerned about our youth. What do we do? We need them to be productive citizens in the world as well, and we are a community that stick together and work together and band together and help with deficiencies. And yes, right now, the youth are a real huge concern in District 2. It's our responsibility to help and help as much as we can. And yes, this is going to be a stretch in District 2, in your neighborhood. And again, the how does matter. I believe that wholeheartedly. There had, we could have done this approach a lot differently. We could have did it a lot better. But we have the information in front of us now. Where do we go? What do we do? Blair and Freeman have agreed to provide the security. They've met with you guys and talked to you and tried to work with you, and they did an awesome job in doing that. So at this time, I will have to go ahead and vote to approve this.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
That's a motion to approve. Thank you.
There's a motion in a second. Ms. Freeman, I'll just ask you a couple of questions, too, before we vote here. I also appreciate the outreach you did, and as Councilmember Johnson notes, there can never be too much of that in a neighborhood on any project, and especially a project like this one. So I'm honored to give you just a second to address that security issue that Councilmember Johnson mentioned, because I think that was a discussion that happened this morning that she brought up, and I think everyone has agreed to, but it's in addition to what we've seen so far in this special use permit. So I just wanted to give you a chance to affirm those hours of operation for security and that that will be a part of your permit situation going forward.
Yeah, so two of our community meetings-
And I need your name for that.
Sorry. Ashley Kuhn, 4616 Dodge Street. Two of the meetings that we had, it was concerned about overnight and activities that would happen when it was dark and that it was an older neighborhood. And so we have since agreed, 4:00 PM, so basically let out of school until 8:00 AM, when our trained staff would be back in the facility, at a larger mass of staff would be back in the building, is what we've agreed to.
Okay. Thank you. And I think the other documentation you submitted for the public record is quite detailed on just about everything else around the facility, which is important in a case like this.
And we also provided the neighborhood with a security plan of A to Z of the site.
Thank you. And I very much agree with the need, as expressed by Councilmember Johnson and others, that I've talked about a lot from this seat. The need in behavioral health in our community is tremendous. This is only one part of that puzzle. We'll talk a little bit later in this meeting about ARPA funding as well. I think that's a huge opportunity for our community, city, county, and state to make progress in this area too, in addition to this project. But that's one of the reasons why I'll be supportive here today as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more lights? Rule call.
Clarimo.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 16 and 17 are approved, seven to zero. Item 18, to consider a Class C liquor license application for Cajun Crab and Foal located at 346 North Saddle Creek Road.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 today. Opponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Hong Bin Lee. The address is 346 North Saddle Creek Row. There's a new restaurant, it's for the seafood restaurant, Cajun Crab and Foal. There's a new restaurant, it's for the seafood restaurant, Cajun Crab and Foal. So I applied an cigarette for the beer. So that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. That is a strip mall there where I used to shop as a kid with Hinky Dinky and Walgreens and Target, so it's transformed, so I wish you the best of luck as you move in there. And that, that's a good area, there's a lot of development going on, so I think you're gonna, you'll do well there. I wish you the best of luck.
Yes. There is, um, yeah, I would do it, I would.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to accept that, number 18.
Second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 19 through 25 were held on October 5th.
Could it be approved?
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 29 through 32, resolutions to approve, but professional services agreement with Earhart Griffin and Associates, Inc., CNC Surveying LLC, Alfred Bernesch and Company, and Olson, Inc., in the amount of $60,000 for the residential snowplow inspectors 2021, 2022 winter season.
Public hearings on items 29 through 32 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
I think I'm actually a proponent. I didn't figure it out in time. Uh, I do have some questions, so I'm grateful that they got pulled off the consent agenda. I just wanted to bring up, when we're talking about snow removal, how important it is, if there are inspections being done. I'm excited about this prospect, because I'm not representing Mode Shift Omaha today. I am representing myself, but as someone who cares a lot about mobility equity, our sidewalks get completely ignored, and they're an afterthought, and so if we're going to be inspecting the way that our snowplow situation is done, that's awesome, because then maybe we can pay a little bit more attention to pedestrian issues, particularly along transit lines, just something that I'd like to bring up. So I hope there's some more conversation about what exactly this is going to entail, but I hope that it will result in better mobility for everyone, no matter the way they get around. Thank you.
Thank you. With the record in effect, she was a proponent. We'll take any other o- opponents now. Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilmember Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So here we are again, another year, and I was the one to ask to have these pulled off, just as we discussed in years past with these professional service agreements. And normally you hear me advocate on behalf of employees at a lower level, but today I'm here to talk about how we're lacking, obviously, employees in the management level, because in the job description of the foreman within the street maintenance division, this falls right in line with the requirements that falls in line with their, their, their job. There is some questions I do have, and I think what I'd like to start with is Public Works.
Todd Fitzpatrick, Public Works.
Yeah. Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'd like to ask you, the, the process of, uh, snow has fallen, we're over a couple inches. We, we see the need to, to send out the, the private contractors within the residential area, and snowplow operations have taken place, and now these professional service agreements are intact, and you have somebody come out and inspect. What, what's, what's the process? Tell me about if one of the inspector, what are the inspectors looking for, and what happens if the inspector finds a problem within the streets of the contractors that we have hired to snowplow them?
What they're looking for is that the streets have been cleared in the residential areas behind the private contractors that we hire to come into those areas. If they find a discrepancy, that something has not been cleared or not been taken care of to their satisfaction, they would reach out to a foreman and/or all the way up to the superintendent or a street maintenance engineer to report that, that there was a discrepancy, and they would either have to go back and address that, or street maintenance would address it, and a pay adjustment would be made for that private contractor.
So possibly there could be an issue with the street, but ultimately it gets directed to street maintenance, who in return would send out a city snowplow driver to fix the problem?
Uh, there's a couple of ways it could be handled. The private contractor could be, if they were still in the area, they would be notified. They could go back and address it, or, and/or we would have a city plow address it.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. 29 through 32, the, the lowest amount for this professional service agreement is $96 an hour, an hour, and the highest price is $118 an hour. That's $118 an hour. Is, is it just based on what the company is? Did, did, how did we decide, or why is there the, the difference in this exact same job duty?
It's set up on a, on a bid basis, so they come in and propose for the quadrants and the, the prices, and it's, it's a situation where they, it's their company overhead, and it's their price for doing this type of service. It's similar to our construction administration. That varies as well when we do construction projects in the summertime for road construction, bridges, things like that.
Okay. And continuing on with streets and complaints, I looked up the mayor's hotline involving snow issues, and looking back to 2018, we had 2,600 complaints. Now, I, I can't tell you if them are on majors, secondaries, residentials, but, and, and of course, that only is to the mayor's hotline. That's not to us. That's not from different avenues of complaints coming in. And in 2019, there was 3,700 complaints. And last year, 2020 calendar year, there was 1,900 complaints. If I base it off of what the complaints I receive are, a majority of them come from residential areas. That and the fact that for us to, once a, a snow accumulation has got to a certain point, we at the city have to make sure that it's taken care of curb-to-curb on our major roads before we, we give the, the residents that chance to, to clear their, their sidewalks. And hopefully, by that time, the contractors have also completed. But my point is, I have to assume a lot of these are from residential, which means them are coming right to the mayor's hotline. They're bypassing the babysitter we're paying to look over the contractor, and ultimately the city is going out and taking care of a lot of these problems themselves. And when they come in and they get an address, I'm sure they just don't come in and say, "Okay, the complaint's at 3610 Orchard." They probably do the whole block. And the reason being is because when you hire contractors in a pickup, um, it isn't the time of the snow, it's the quality of service you receive. Pickups, no matter the size, half-ton, quarter-ton, whatever, one-ton, the plows and the equipment just don't take care of the streets the way the city equipment would. And I'll tell you where I'm going with this. So we haven't fulfilled our job as a city, as a broken record, to hear me say we don't have as many city employees in these spots manning these city plows, because on each occurrence that there's snow, and on average, if we're 30-some people short, that's 30-some pieces of equipment plus that are sitting in these district yards empty that could be taken care of this. Not to mention, you know, we could pull people, people from sewer, or traffic, or wherever to man this equipment, and what that would do is, it would actually, we wouldn't need these professional service agreements, because we wouldn't need these contractors to come and do residential roads, which would lessen the complaints we get, because the city employees, without a doubt, do a better job. Overall, our snow operations and procedure needs an overhaul, and it could easily start with not spending this quarter of a million dollars to pay somebody who ultimately, we'll get back to the supervisor or whoever's on call, to get to a foreman, to get it back to a city employee, to actually go do the job right. And also what I'd like to do is, I brought this up before, and I remember, because we gave the foremans a pay raise, and we gave the foremans a pay raise, because we said, "Well, we want to keep them around." And, and not only that, we, we, we fill their job description, and what we ask them to do deems the, the raise necessary. So I'm going to tell you what's exactly in their job description to take care of. So I had asked earlier pre-council about Foreman One, and I was told that they're busy, and they are very busy, and it's actually not in their job description directly to deal with, uh, snow operations. But if you go to Foreman Two and you look at their job description, which is their job, under the essential functions, in, in one of the categories, point-blank, oversees snow removal operation. I'm not done. I'm just scrolling. And if we go into the Foreman Three category, and we go under nature of work, and you're saying, "Why are you reading this?" Because this is what we're paying the outside contractor to do. We're already paying a city employee to do it. So why are we paying somebody else to do it? So for the Foreman Three. Oversees snow removal operations in an assigned area of the city, which includes contract oversight. Let me read that again. Oversees snow removal operations in an assigned area of the city, which includes contract oversight. We're paying city employees at different categories, and I could go into the management, too, and even management for the super, uh, city maintenance superintendent or supervisor, it directly states that they're the ones that can approve the money for the contracts to these contractors. There has to come a time when we say, "We're done helping private contractors. We're going to finally help our city employees." And, and whether that's the city employees that we are obviously always short, which could do a better job and maybe take care of the residential areas without hiring private contractors, uh, because a lot, uh, somebody came up and said something about sidewalks. You don't get the complaints from the city equipment with the city operator in the orange snowplow throwing the snow 40 feet up into the city yard. You get it from the pickup that has to do 40 miles an hour, because they can't push the snow properly. That's what gives people grief to their drive approaches and their sidewalks. We have a quarter million dollars here, and the reason I read you the job description for the jobs that we're already paying employees to do, because I never want them to say, "Oh, Councilman Palermo doesn't want your snow taken care of in your residential area." No, actually, it's just the opposite. I want your snow taken care of better, and I want the oversight to be better, and I'd like the quarter of a million dollars put into actually adding some personnel in that management category that their job description is to actually manage the snow removal operations. And we've, just a couple meetings ago, uh, we've seen these same contractors are overseeing work in the summer, so we wouldn't just need them for winter. We need them in the summer, too, and we've found, and hopefully we're taking care of problems when it comes to poor in streets. So it's a year-round job that's desperately needed. Colleagues, listen up. We don't need to waste this money to pay an outside firm. What we need to do is invest and add more people to the city of Omaha who actually care and take care of our equipment and our roads. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I, I don't necessarily disagree, because I've had some issues in my own neighborhood over the summer with, um, an inspector that should have been inspecting how the roads were done and wasn't doing their job. So, um, but, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'm going to give you the opportunity to respond maybe to what Councilman Palermo just stated. I, I would agree with Councilman Palermo. I think that, I think that your guys in Public Works actually do do a better job than the private contractors, and I mean that as a compliment to the guys that work for you. I've been on the snowplow, ridden on the snowplow with one of the Public Works, fine Public Works people that we have that plow our snow, and they truly do care, and they spend hours and hours, um, making sure that there's snow removed and that we have a safe place to travel. But is there anything we can do right now? I mean, it is the end of October, and we already have the private people hired. So I guess, what are your thoughts about what Councilman Palermo said, and what would be the challenges for the city if we didn't approve these?
Well, let me start by, by why we have this system in place, because it really boils down to level of service. When we get a-
Todd, just your name for that, for the record.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Todd Fitzpatrick, Public Works, apologize. What this boils down to is the timeliness of snow removal. We have approximately 100 Public Works trucks and employees to operate those trucks, and they're on the main streets, and the secondary is when we get a snowstorm. Now, we never know how long that's going to take. It takes a variable amount of time, depending on numerous conditions that I won't get into, but while they're out there doing those primaries and secondaries, these contractors are moved into the residential areas. And so there, we go from 100 trucks to over 300 trucks by employing these, these contractors to come in. If that were to go away, this, this quarter million dollars that we've heard about, that would buy us one truck and only would allow enough money left over for one employee to run it. So it would make a very miniscule difference in our level of service or our performance.
And the reason I read you the job description for the jobs that we're already paying employees to do, because I never want them to say, Councilman Palermo doesn't want your snow taken care of in your residential area. No, actually, it's just the opposite. I want your snow taken care of better, and I want the oversight to be better, and I'd like the quarter of a million dollars put into actually adding some personnel in that management category that their job description is to actually manage the snow removal operations. And we've just, a couple meetings ago, we've seen these same contractors are overseeing work in the summer. So we wouldn't just need them for winter. We need them in the summer too, and we've found and hopefully we're taking care of problems when it comes to pouring streets. So it's a year-round job that's desperately needed. Colleagues, listen up. We don't need to waste this money to pay an outside firm. What we need to do is invest and add more people to the city of Omaha who actually care and take care of our equipment and our roads. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I don't necessarily disagree because I've had some issues in my own neighborhood over the summer with an inspector that should have been inspecting how the roads were done and wasn't doing their job. So, but Mr. Fitzher, I'm going to give you the opportunity to respond maybe to what Councilman Palermo just stated. I would agree with Councilman Palermo. I think that, I think that your guys in Public Works actually do do a better job than the private contractors. And I mean that as a compliment to the guys that work for you. I've been on the snowplow, ridden on the snowplow with one of the Public Works, fine Public Works people that we have that plow our snow, and they truly do care. And they spend hours and hours making sure that there's snow removed and that we have a safe place to travel. But is there anything we can do right now? I mean, it is the end of October, and we already have the private people hired. So I guess, what are your thoughts about what Councilman Palermo said? And what would be the challenges for the city if we didn't approve these?
Well, let me start by why we have this system in place, because it really boils down to level of service. When we get a-
Todd, that's your name for that, for the record.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. President. Todd Fitzher, Public Works, apologize. What this boils down to is the timeliness of snow removal. We have approximately 100 Public Works trucks and employees to operate those trucks, and they're on the main streets. And the secondary is when we get a snowstorm. Now, we never know how long that's going to take. It takes a variable amount of time depending on numerous conditions that I won't get into. But while they're out there doing those primaries and secondaries, these contractors are moved into the residential areas. And so there, we go from 100 trucks to over 300 trucks by employing these contractors to come in. If that were to go away, this quarter million dollars that we've heard about, that would buy us one truck and only would allow enough money left over for one employee to run it. So it would make a very miniscule difference in our level of service or our performance for a given snowstorm. Whereas when we bring in these contractors and do this, now, I'm not opposed to city works, city employees doing all of this, if that's the desire of this council. But we're not going to cover that, and we're not going to give you the same level of service with a quarter million dollars. And it wouldn't even scratch the surface. So this is designed from a time standpoint to get residents out of their driveways, out of their neighborhoods, within 24 hours of a snowstorm, with a two to six inch snowstorm, kind of an average snowstorm, because of all these private contractors coming in. This specific item that's in front of you today is for the inspectors. And when you triple the amount of trucks on the street, bringing them into these residential areas, we have 5,000 lane miles, as you all know, of streets to plow when it snows. And that requires, we only have five district foremen, so that requires more people to come in. So what you're buying here is approximately 40 people who come in only when it snows. That's the only time we call them. We're calling the contractors in, we need the inspectors. The rest of the time, we're not paying them. And if we don't use them, we only have, we only call them in three times, this is a not to exceed amount. It's not a guaranteed amount. It's only how much they come in and how much time they charge us. So it takes care of that peak is the best way I can try to describe it to you. And if I may, there was a member of the audience that came up and talked about sidewalks. I would like to share with you, last year, we did track complaints. We actually got more complaints about sidewalks than we did about streets, and we took that very seriously. So my colleague here in Parks, Matt Kalsovich, your new Parks Director, and I met, and Parks was already handling a percentage of sidewalks throughout the city. What they didn't have was the right kind of equipment to do some of that heavy lifting when we got that big snow in February. So Public Works and Parks are teaming together with those city employees, where Public Works is funding some of that equipment, the heavy equipment needs, and Parks is handling the personnel for that equipment to try to improve our level of service and our performance on our sidewalk snow removal. Because we did notice that there was a deficiency in that area last year, so I want to take the opportunity to explain that difference and some of the things you'll see this year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I just kind of wanted to clarify that if we, because I think Councilmember Palermo, you know, is making good points, and again, kind of have a problem with just making sure that these inspectors are actually going out and doing their job. And I'm not sure what the follow-up is with the inspectors, just to make sure that they are doing their job. Because if we're getting that many calls, you know, I'll just trust the figures that Councilmember Palermo gave, and I guess we don't know whether those calls were for sidewalks or streets. But if we were getting that many calls on residential streets, then I would be concerned that the inspectors aren't doing their job.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, I'd like to address that. A lot of the calls that we get are people that are upset because we plowed in their driveway. I went out and plowed my driveway, your snowplow came by, and now I got a windrow at the end of my driveway. That counts as a complaint. It has nothing to do with the inspector, has nothing to do whether it was a city employee or a contractor doing that work. But that's a very common occurrence that we get. Or, you guys plowed in my fire hydrant. And as you know, that's the responsibility of the resident to go out and clear that fire hydrant. So it's those types of complaints that are grouped in there. I'm not suggesting that it couldn't be better. It can always be better, and we certainly strive for that. But those are some of the very common complaints that we get.
And then with the amount, when they do that, you also, it was mentioned that we would then get money back or not, maybe not pay the private contractor for work that was poorly done or missed.
Correct.
So would that, and I haven't seen the figures, and maybe I would like to if you had them, but how much did we maybe save because the inspectors saved us money that we would have paid for work that wasn't done? I mean, do we kind of make up for some of that or not?
I'm not sure if I understand your question. Are you asking that if one of the private contractors doesn't do a street and the inspector catches it, do we save money? Absolutely. And back to your earlier question was, how do we know that the inspectors are doing their job? They're required, just like on a construction contract, they're required to fill out logs. They're assigned an area, specific streets, there's forms and sheets that have to be filled out before they can get paid. And then they are spot checked, back to Councilman Palermo's point, by the foreman. There's foremen also checking on the inspectors and doing spot checks to make sure that they're doing their jobs as well. But they have forms that have to be filled out, and those are logged and checked by Public Works employees to make sure that they've been out doing their jobs as well.
Do we have that maybe on some kind of GPS system where if they're out doing it, they're doing it with maybe an iPad so that they're, you know, we're tracking the streets that they're checking and going down?
Yeah, every vehicle, not only snow equip, snow removal equipped vehicles, as well as the inspector's vehicles, are all GPS tracked.
Okay, so just because they're private, they still have the GPS track?
That's correct. The contractors and the inspectors.
And you have access to that information?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my questions. Is there, did I miss anything that you wanted to respond to that we've talked about today?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, no, I don't have anything to add unless there's further questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. How long have we been using these contractor services like that, Mr. Fitzher? Can you answer that?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, this plan was implemented during the subtle administration, so 12 to 14 years ago. I don't know the exact date, Councilman, but it's been in place for over a decade.
And when we went through our budget process, I know Public Works, the AEO ones, twos and threes, there was a vacant number, I believe it was 49 at that time. If those, just hypothetically, if those positions were filled, would that change any need for these contractors doing this work?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, no, it would not. We fill those if they're, if they're short, which we are short right now, and it's by about that same number. As Councilman Palermo indicated earlier, we bring people in from traffic, and we bring people in from sewers and parks and other areas to keep those trucks moving. So if those positions were all filled with AEOs, that would be preferable, and I would like to see us achieve that goal. But it would not change the need for the contractors.
Okay, thanks for that answer. And I want to thank Councilman Palermo for the methodical process he walks people through in this meeting on educating people on the rates they're paying these contractors that do this work, when I agree with the points he made, that I think those should be done by city employees and not spending a quarter of a million dollars on contractors when it should be done in-house. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Mr. Fitzher. You said that there were several complaints made, one of them being customers would call in because the snow would be plowed into their driveways, things like that. So with that complaint being made, with this additional service, would that mediate that problem?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, no, it will not. When we drive a snowplow down a street, whether it's a three-quarter ton pickup or a big orange tandem truck, the snow comes off of what we call a windrow in the front of that plow, and it just moves it over to the curb. And if your driveway's already been plowed, you're going to have a windrow at the end of the driveway. There's nothing we can really do about that. We do train our drivers specifically in cul-de-sacs and things where they're moving back and forth to try to minimize or avoid that as best they can. But when you're driving down a normal street, the snow comes off the end of that plow and moves over to the curbside.
Do you train your contractors to do the same?
Yes, we do. We have training classes with all of our contractors, and when they get new drivers in, they're required to attend some of that training before they go out the first time.
Well, I've witnessed some of your contractors that will plow when they see a driveway has already been cleaned. How do we as customers report that?
You mean if they, to clarify your question, if they plow snow back across the driveway?
Yes. Customers are, get out early in the morning and clean up their driveways and remove the snow out of their driveways, and then contractors come around and then plow back into those driveways.
That has always and will always happen. I don't know how else to say it. When we drive a snowplow down a street, the snow comes off the end of the plow, and it ends up at the curbside. And if your driveway is at that curbside, you're going to have a windrow of snow across your driveway whether you've plowed it or not. We simply don't have the equipment or manpower to go clean out tens of thousands of driveways individually as we plow our streets. We would never get our streets done.
But in some areas, I'm not talking about city, city plows, I'm talking about contractors with a truck, and they have a blade where they can have the blade turn forward, sideways, et cetera. Some streets have, streets that it's only occupied by one side of the street, and yet they choose to plow into a driveway as opposed to the street that is not occupied with the driveway.
Todd Fitzher.
So that becomes a training issue, and I'm just asking, you know, if they're being educated on, you know, being courteous on that effort.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, absolutely, that's ongoing. We are always reaching out, myself included, when it snows. I still get in my truck and go around and take pictures and call foremen and do things like that and take every opportunity. I have neighbors that are not bashful because they know where I work and what I do, to come over and tell me that's the worst job of plowing they've seen in their 40 years in the neighborhood. So we are always trying to do better. But back to your point, even though they do have articulated blades, they also don't necessarily have time to clean out, you know, each and every driveway as they go around a cul-de-sac. Sometimes there is residual snow that gets placed back in front of the driveway as they plow that cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to follow back around on the original intent with the agreement. We've already approved the contractors for this year. We know why they're in place. Unfortunately, they're going to have to remain in place until we get serious about hiring the AEO ones who we've been lacking for quite some time. And there was some points made up that I didn't bring with, each contractor we hire is required to have GPS on their vehicle, which would make it even easier for a couple Foreman Ones that we would hire. I think the comment was made, we would only get one employee in one truck for $240,000. That's not true. I mean, there's just absolutely no way. For one, we have tons of equipment sitting there because of the lack of employees that we could easily put employees in, and Foreman Ones don't make them much money, although sometimes they obviously deserve it. So we could get into the technicalities of where the complaints come with snow removal operations and probably being the only person here or in the back row, maybe except for the new city attorney, he's kind of boots on the ground, that have actually, that was a joke, actually, yeah, maybe, have actually driven a snowplow. I know where a lot of the complaints come. And again, they come from a snowplow, not been able to get all the way down to the ground with the freezing thaw we have. It gets warm, it fluffs up, it freezes up. Ultimately, at the end of the day, when the snow operations are done, we send our city equipment back through all the residential areas just about anyway. And maybe those people would disagree, but that's the truth. By the time you get through all the complaints, all the different lane miles, by the turns you make around schools and churches, we've covered all the lane miles within the city with the city plow anyway. But back on point with what we're here for, I want everyone to know that if this doesn't get approved, we still have employees who are paid by us, all of us, to inspect the work that's being done by the contractors. That's already going to go through. I'm going to work within the committee to see what we can do and change the needle to get more city employees back into taking care of this. I think it would reduce the complaints. The complaints I pulled were directly off the mayor's hotline, which is great at keeping stats. It can tell you last year, last month, two years ago, gives you the year. It makes it very easy to find the snow issues. So what this agreement is for, is for, we're going to pay a contractor to babysit a contractor, but ultimately, we're responsible with our city foreman and our city snowplows to take care of the problems that we receive as council members. And you're going to get them. If you haven't got them, which three you haven't, you're going to get them. And at the end of the day, you can't blame the contractor. The only recourse you have is to say, hey, Public Works, please send out a plow driver and take care of this road that maybe was missed. And keep in mind, when you get into them heavy snows, they may look like they were missed, but they probably weren't. But the bottom line is the contractors just don't have the equipment. So 240 grand, we could certainly put that back in our budget and work on hiring more management to actually do this, knowing that every single contractor has GPS on their vehicle. They have a map, we can see where they've been. And if you're only focusing on the complaints, you could get there even quicker. We already have the pickups for Public Works foremen. They're four-wheel drives, they're bought and paid for, they're sitting there. I'm just done with these agreements that I know are not necessary. They're not necessary in the summer, they're not necessary in the winter. I could go on and on and on, but I don't see any more lights. I'm going to make a motion to deny 29 through 32.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, a second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
No.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion fails, three to four.
Roll call.
Palermo.
No.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes, four to three. Item 42, an ordinance to acquire private property for the 5B Street Project.
Public hearing on number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 43, an ordinance to transfer a permanent easement in land to Metropolitan Utilities District to relocate facilities located on the northwest corner of North 11th Street and East Locust Street.
Public hearing on number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 44, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for condemned buildings or structures on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group number 2021 dash 01.
Public hearing on number 44 is today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to clarify that when this was first reviewed and looked at, I was not present, but just wanted to put it on record that the process for demolition of property is a well-thought-out process, and I'm confident that the city planning department did go out and do its job in terms of making sure that those houses that were scheduled or did get knocked down was within the appropriate guidelines that we as a city have. And then also, I wanted to share that individuals that their homes were demolished, they were given an opportunity or they received a notification that this was going to take place. So I just wanted that to be on record, that this was done above board. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
One public hearing can be held for items 45 and 46, ease communication in opposition, ordinances to approve agreements with Elkhorn Public Schools and Millard Public Schools for school resource officers for the 2021-2022 school year.
Public hearings on items 45 and 46 are today.
Hello, Lieutenant Charles Albutham, Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I'm here to answer any questions in regards to 45 and 46.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd Street. I just, first of all, I don't think SROs in schools are a good idea. We've heard a lot of data already around that at the budget time, so I won't go into that. But I will say, I was at a library meeting last night, and what Millard really needs is a library. That's the type of resource that school kids need. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Knowing some people in Millard that are in education and administration out there, a couple things I wanted to point out. a couple of things I, I wanted to point out that those SROs are there for the safety of the students and the staff. And the R in the SRO is resource. And I got a question for our new city attorney. I'm going to put you right on the spot if I could, Matt.
Matt, who's the city attorney?
Can you give a brief synopsis of what the Fourth Amendment is? Right on the spot for you, your counsel.
Unlawful search and seizure.
Thank you.
Nailed it.
You're dismissed.
Thank you.
So, I, I know what a lot of people maybe don't know about those SROs, the resource they provide is they go into the classrooms and they talk to students about their Miranda rights, the Fourth Amendment, unlawful search and seizures, and Lieutenant can probably fill me in a little better on that, as could Matt. But it really is a, a process beyond just being there, an armed officer at a school. It's education of the students and to provide that resource and to be even a mentor to the kids in the school that might not otherwise have it. They really are role models that, that if you talk to people that, that deal with kids in high schools like that, it's tougher than ever in these days. But, but I, I just wanted to comment on that, that, that I think it's a vital service that's provided that also is reimbursed by Millard. It's not paid by the city, is what I understood from our meeting this morning in pre-council. So, I, I just wanted to make that comment that, that it goes way beyond just having an armed officer, they're, they're mentors and, and kids can, can trust them and it, it builds future trust with law enforcement that is much needed today on what's going on in this country, that if you have that resource officer and you had a relationship with them, it's, it really is a positive thing and, and you know, with the violence in schools as well, having that, dealt with this in this, in this city years ago. I just wanted to state my, my thoughts on that, that I, I think it's a real good program and I'll continue to support it, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, Mr. Plomo, you're recognized.
Sorry, Mr. President. Councilmember Bagley brought up the point I wanted to bring up where we've heard opposition about this and we know how important the budget is and the fact that the City of Omaha doesn't pay a penny for these officers and where they're assigned, it's, it's all reimbursed by the, the school districts where they are. And I'll tell you a little story of a SRO I know very, very well and you can do your research and find out who it is. He's my father-in-law and he, he just retired. And you hear, well, police in the school, how's it going to affect the kids? And I'll give you some stories of when I would, last year we went to a couple Millard North basketball games and the kids were all there and everybody was crazy and teachers were there and every single kid had, had come by Officer Martinez to say hi. This is the, the friendly face they see, the person who is there to keep them out of trouble, the person that they know cares about them, just like all the staff in the building. And that's what you want from kids, that's what you want from kids in that setting where they go out of their way to make sure the, the resource officer who some think are detriment to the kids in the school, no, they're actually a huge positive. Not to mention those instances where, heaven forbid, we ever have some sort of school shooting, I guarantee I, I know who will be running towards that person. So, with that, and there's many stories like that, being out in public with him, and if we honestly thought that seeing police officers in uniform in a school was a bad thing or maybe it provoked kids or encouraged them that maybe, you know, well, let's do something bad, well then, how's that any different from Pace where we have 6,000 kids that have law enforcement officers there in uniform, working on the community policing that we have in this community where you can go anywhere, north, south Omaha, even out west, and these kids will come up to officers on a daily basis in their car with their Pace shirt on and tell them hi, where they wouldn't have said hi before. It's no different than the SRO at a, out in public, at a basketball game, at a sporting event, and they go up and tell this officer hi. They're respected, they know they're there for their safety. And I, I just think when we hear that it's not necessary, it's, it's just so far out there. And it certainly is nothing of what you hear with being a detriment to these kids. So, for everybody that's on here, I, I appreciate it. I appreciate that we continue to see these on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 47, an ordinance to approve a five-year universal forensic extraction device agreement with Celebrite Inc. for the digital forensic squad.
Public hearing on number 47 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve a service contract with Deloitte and Tush LLP to provide services related to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund and the amount not to exceed $250,000.
Public hearing on number 48 is today, proponents please, Mr. Curtis.
I'm Steve Curtis, Finance Director, and I'm here as a proponent for item agenda or agenda item number 48. As you may know, this ordinance approves a service contract between the City of Omaha and Deloitte for services related to the ARPA or American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan of 21 gave the City of Omaha federal funds. We've gotten about 56 million with another 56 million to come in about five more months. The initial term of this contract is October 21 through September 30 of 22. For this, they'll provide administrative services, guidance, assistance to comply with the federal requirements and regulations under the ARPA Act. It's an amount not to exceed 250,000 and that was a little bit of a ballpark. I think the county spent about 1.3 million with Deloitte on CARES funding. A half of that was because Deloitte actually ran part of their, I believe it was their rental assistance program for a period of time. It's contemplated that the individual programs that are selected for ARPA will be expenditures that will be brought before this body for your approval once Deloitte has taken a look and your input's been solicited, I know, over the past. Funds, as, as a reminder, under the ARPA Act are to support, these are the five areas that they included in the actual federal passed legislation, is to support COVID-19-related public health, public health expenditures, to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, to replace public sector revenue, provide premium pay and to invest in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. So, with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. And I do represent myself. If I represent other people or, you know, organization or something, I would let you know. So, when I come up here, it's because I'm interested in civic engagement. That's, it's, so I'm an opponent and Mr., the Finance Director, you know, he's convincing. However, I think that this is an example where the local government treats its local people like they're stupid and they can't do this kind of work. Deloitte has had the, the opportunity of acquiring this experience and I, I just think that a local, a local company could provide these services for the city and, and the county, but that has not happened. It's the state, the county have gone with Deloitte and, and that's just a lost opportunity, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Curtis, if you have just a second please. I would just respond to that as well as, it might kind of feed into what I was going to bring up. It's one of the reasons for us to go out and do this is that there are incredible parameters that are, are set forth by how these dollars can be deployed and making sure that they are properly deployed is really Deloitte's, what, what Deloitte will be assisting us in so that we are not in a situation down the road where we have to be paying back dollars that were either needlessly or, or applied in an unnecessary manner.
Steve Curtis, City Finance, you are correct in that you could be exposed for millions of dollars of repayment if this isn't done correctly. They have written these rules pretty stringently so that there are quite a few hurdles and reporting requirements. But a little bit of good news, Deloitte's local team will be doing most of this work. So, a local staff will be doing most of this, with the exception, I think, the main partners in Austin. I, I only felt like, I felt like you needed to have a national firm with boots on the ground in Washington and connections to Treasury so that you could vet some of your ideas as they're made. There are a lot of fine local firms and I don't know that they have that level of staffing so that they could do this. Two firms in particular that I was interested in were Deloitte because they've had this longstanding relationship with the state and the county on CARES money, but also RSM, who happens to be our current accountant or auditor. And they had decided after a lot of thought that they would be conflicted out of it. So, that's part of the reason we went straight to Deloitte.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, I'd ask just a few questions here too before we move on to the next item. So, thanks for that overview and the contract with Deloitte proposed today is, has a term of one year, right, but can be extended?
Yes.
And I think that's probably the idea, right? Because the duration of the ARPA funds is to be allocated by 2024 but spent by 2026. So, you'd probably anticipate a multi-year engagement.
I, I think so, but I, I, I believe we have lots of good ideas between the administration and the council, community ideas. I, I wouldn't be surprised to see us get most of this committed by mid to late next year. But again, that's kind of remains to be seen, so it's, we'll have to extend if obviously we can't get that far.
Well, this commission today is the 250,000 that you were talking about and that is paid out of ARPA funds, which I think is good. But I also want to be mindful of, we want to maximize those ARPA funds into the community, not into a oversight contract, right?
And I would agree. And I, I think one of the things to remember is that at the county level in particular, I think I'd mentioned, they've spent well over a million dollars on the CARES side of this. They didn't have quite the staffing arrangement in their finance office that we have. We have a couple of individuals, and you've probably met most of them, who are quickly coming up to speed on this so that we can do as much of the work as possible and maybe use Deloitte more to vet or approve that, yeah, you could do that or no, don't do it like that, but do it like this. As well as they have a portal, they have some electronics that we may or may not decide, depending on the kind of programs we do, we may or may not need to use their portal.
Okay. And then taking into account some, some of the council members' interests, the mayor did outline to us, I think it was last Friday, some intentions of general allocations within the areas you noted were qualified for the, for these funds. 40 million for revenue replacement for the city, 20 million for affordable housing, which I think is very important and I was pleased to see that and we think can be matched by the private sector as well.
Yes.
About 15 million into community grant programs for things like mental health, violence prevention and workforce programs. 10 million for public space improvements and 10 million for tourism. And I recognize those are, you know, general allocations at this point. But where I'm, where I'm going with that is describe a little bit Deloitte and Tush's engagement with that. So, when they, if this is approved next week and they get up and running, they'll help make sure any applications that are in are consistent and can qualify for this funding. They may make recommendations to you or the mayor for what those applications might provide. They'll do the paperwork around it and accounting around it, I believe. And I think the indication was that could be done, at least on some of this, some of these funds by the end of the year. So, realizing that there's, you have 56 million right now and anticipating another 56 million in the spring, it probably doesn't happen all at the same time, right? So, there, you anticipate, you know, individual contracts or individual applications that have been recommended coming to the council and sort of being counted against those general allocation areas or how would you see that unfolding?
That's a good question. One of the things that we've looked at and understanding that your desire had been to try to bring it as a whole package, which we're quite sure we could do, but as best we could at least lay out these priority areas. An example could be our community programs area. We've talked to a couple of the really large, kind of third-party vendors, if you will, to say that you have a, you as that vendor have a large network of community service entities, would you be interested in taking some maybe $10 million piece of this? With all of our input, but actually administering that program, vetting, making sure that the reporting is correct and resources and receipts are there. So, that would probably come as a larger dollar amount versus if we were going to do something in the community and say, well, here's 15, that's going to go here. And instead of bringing each of those to you, it might be as a larger contract.
Okay.
Affordable housing is probably another good example of that.
Right, so I would imagine a couple of these could be done in that timeframe and probably in, in large amounts, like you say. But for an example, with a community grant program that probably is administered by a third party, that might be an allocation that comes to us for approval, but then otherwise goes to that entity to administer.
And then there would be subrecipients under that. I think you would be in a position to do the larger contract. And I'll look at Amber, would they do the smaller contracts too within that? No, I think we would do the larger contract, so it'd be a larger organization that you would recognize. And then those subject matters below that, the subrecipients would come probably to my department and the mayor's office to make sure they qualify.
Okay. That's helpful to my understanding. I think part of the interest too from council members has been we want to sort of see the overall plan and not just see things come through piecemeals so we know where we are and we know where we are within these categories of priorities. And I, I think you're understanding that interest, right?
To the extent we can do that, we understand that's what, I, I know you've expressed that on others. To the extent we can without holding up any initial, any individual initiative, we would do that certainly.
Okay. And then last question for now, the timeframe then, if this is approved next week, when would you anticipate some of those things starting to happen? Or is there like an application deadline that'll be publicized for entities?
I think we've mentioned prior to this, some of our initial priority levels were one, get clarification on, you've seen the word revenue replacement here, that's kind of the catch-all for the city, making cities whole again, which was one of the first priorities under the ARPA Act. We have a number of things that we believe qualify and we'll work with them to make sure that we understand what does and doesn't qualify. Another one that we've talked about is tourism, getting our hotels in particular back up and running and getting some funding back into the, the CBB. So, we'll probably work with them to say which parts of this work. I think affordable housing has moved down the path pretty well. We might be able to vet a lot of that with them. And some of the ideas that we're having on the community services might also be able to be vetted with them. I think a lot of that work can be done by the end of the year, with the understanding that we're going to be pretty careful about overspending 56 million until we know we have that second tranche.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
No further lights, next item.
Item 49, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 43, Article 9, Contractors Changing the Contractor Licensing Requirements for CEUs, Adding a Penalty Fee for Late Renewals.
Public hearing on number 49 is today, proponents please.
Anna Bespoyasny, Superintendent, Permits and Inspections, 1819 Farnum Street. Good afternoon, President Festerson and members of the council. Contractor licensing for building contractors has been required since 2011, when the original ordinance, ordinance was adopted. Now, after enforcing this code for 10 years, permits and inspections has identified some sections that required clarification or some minor changes. All classes of licenses that were defined in the original ordinance are maintained in this update. While some licenses were granted under the grandfather provision, they are not tracked or coded separately from a license that was granted based on an exam. As long as the license is renewed in a timely manner, it will continue to remain an active license. In order to encourage timely renewal, penalty fees have been added to this ordinance based on how late the renewal is filed. Continuing education requirements have also been greatly modified in an effort to clearly define the number of hours required and allow more options for acceptable courses. I contacted several of the local agencies that represent the contractors affected by these changes for their input and received positive feedback about the changes presented in the ordinance before you. These were Metropolitan Omaha Builders Association, Build Omaha, Association of General Contractors and Professional Remodelers. and Professional Remodeling Organization of Nebraska and Iowa, which was formerly known as the National Association of the Remodeling Industry. I'm available for any questions, if you have any, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jaylene Ellenstein with the Metro Omaha Builders Association, address 2637 South 158th Plaza, Omaha 68130. On behalf of the Metro Omaha Builders Association and our 350 members, we're in favor of the ordinance to amend Chapter 43 of the municipal code. We feel that the principles of the ordinance falls in line with MOBA's desire to protect the public's health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, opponents? Mr. Love?
Thank you. My name is Preston Love, Jr. My address is 6021 Villa DeSante Drive. I'm here, quite frankly, I'm not sure if I'm an opponent or a proponent, because I'm not sure of the clarity of this proposed ordinance on the impact to small and emerging businesses, specifically those in North Omaha. I'm here as an advocate for them. I must say that I have been involved with the original SEB ordinance, and was, quite frankly, part of the thinking process and the development process from the outside of the ordinance. And it had great potential, and some mixed success. But the bottom line is, hasn't worked well for many of the small contractors and emerging businesses. And may I say that, at the time that there became a frenzy about the licensing, I, along with many of the smaller contractors, I don't want to say we opposed the idea, but we did, in a way, because of the impact that it would have on the small and emerging businesses, and it turns out that we, our prospect of the licensing was correct. It has had not a good effect on the small emerging contractors. So when we look at what's being proposed, the question is, what is the impact on the small and emerging business? And that's why I'm here. I must say that, as an advocate for years for them, I know and can tell you straight up that they have not grown. Many of them have failed. Many of them have been relegated to handyman, and some of them have just lost because of the lack of business volume, their capacity. And so it has been feeding on itself for years, and licensing has been part, a part, not the problem, but a part of the problem. So I come to you to say, what is the impact of this, what looks like a small change, on these small contractors? And in my conversations, especially when I realized that this was on the agenda in the last couple of days, I have been trying, prior to me knowing even that this existed, to get a meeting with some of the key players in the city, planning, the human relations and others, to talk this through. And so I was a little shocked that we had this to deal with right now. So I come to you respectfully to ask that you postpone your vote on this issue for maybe two or three weeks, and allow me, and quite frankly, not just me, but me and others, to have some meetings with public relations and planning, to see and talk through the impact. Hopefully that we will, I will be standing with you as a proponent after that, but that I think that I would ask that you take me seriously, and that we don't want to have a negative impact as it relates to the licensing. I don't want to prolong the conversation, but the licensing hasn't worked because of how it has to be occurred, and it's a little difficult for the smaller businesses. It's easy for the large contractors to assign a staff to go study and prepare for the tests, and it's easy to reach down in a pretty big bucket of money and pay the fees. But for the small and emerging contractor who's out doing what he's doing, he didn't have the time to really even focus on what he needs to focus on to get the license. And there is another discussion we could have, and I hope that we will have, on the whole idea of grandfathering. We have so many of our small contractors who have been in business for 20, 30 years, and need, really, to be grandfathered up in a way that could make sense. That's a discussion that we can have positively and proactively. So my request, respectfully, is that it be put off for two or three weeks. I have talked to one, a couple of you about setting up that meeting, and I think we have an agreement on that, and I have talked to some of the parties within the staff, and so I think it will happen, and so that's what I've requested.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I know we talked about this yesterday, I'm going to follow up with you here in a minute about both grandfathering issue and the small emerging business issue. But before I do that, I'll check and see if there's any other opponents that are here Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I do traditionally recognize other council members first, so Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Preston, good to see you.
Good seeing you.
By the way, and just for the record, too, this isn't going to be voted on today regardless.
Okay.
It's only the public hearing for it, so.
Yes, I'm really asking, technically, that it not be voted on in the next meeting, which would be the third, so.
All right. Well, it sounds like some meetings are going to be set up anyway, so we'll see how those go before any decisions are made in that regard, I think. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just publicly thank Jaylene and her organization, the Metro Omaha Builders Association, and the efforts that they've gone to over the years to provide education opportunities for contractors. They do a good job of publicizing the events, they're affordable, and they're well-attended, and so I just want to thank MOBA for their efforts since 2011.
Thank you. And I would just add that Councilmember Johnson and I talked this morning about these issues, and I want to follow up with you, Mr. Love, on both items, in terms of the grandfathering issue in this ordinance, but then also potential small emerging business changes to that ordinance that you may find beneficial, and some issues that I know we have, believe we need to address to make it effective going past this calendar year. And to your point, helping companies that are still involved and have qualified to participate, not just aging out arbitrarily because they haven't grown, given some timeframes that are in there, because we want to make sure those companies still can participate and have city business that they're very much entitled to. Anna, I could ask you just a couple of questions about the grandfathering issue for now that isn't here. So Mr. Love and I talked last night, and when you first look at this ordinance, it is a bit confusing, because in Section 43 278, it does strike out a number of paragraphs that were originally meant to grandfather folks into the licensing issue. I worked with Mr. Love at the time to make sure that was in here, and I just wanted you to confirm for us that that's, that program is not going away. Anyone who is already grandfathered is still grandfathered, it's just that this language is antiquated, because it talks about a September 1st, 2012 timeframe, right?
Correct, yeah. Anyone who was applied under the original ordinance to be grandfathered and receive that grandfathered license, they already have their license. So this provision expired in 2012. Those licenses, as long as they're keeping them active and renewing them every year, or every three years, excuse me, when their expiration comes up, then their license would be continued and it would still be active. So whoever is grandfathered already remains to be grandfathered. We don't track them separately, so I couldn't tell you who might have received a grandfather license versus who might have tested for that license. It's all in one, one big pot of information.
And I know a challenge for you, for those that are grandfathered or not grandfathered, is that sometimes things just slip through the cracks, or it's COVID, or there's health concerns, or something like that, and somebody's license might lapse before a renewal occurs.
Correct.
In an instance like that, though, a person that is currently grandfathered wouldn't be kicked out of the grandfather, right?
They wouldn't be kicked out of the grandfather. We do have a, there is a section in the original ordinance which is not highly used, actually, I don't know if it's ever been used, but it is for an inactive license. So if someone could foresee that they were going to be unable to renew their license, they could apply for an inactive license, and we would have that on record, and by applying for the inactive license, they would not have to provide the bond and insurance that's required for an active license. So it gives them a little bit of grace from meeting those requirements, but their license then would still be maintained.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Love, do you want to come up for a minute, too? I wanted to see if that addressed your grandfathering questions for now, even though I think you have some additional ideas that might make it better, right?
I do have additional ideas, but I want to augment what you just said makes sense. But where there is still not clarity, because I think embedded in that is the assumption that everyone who wanted to and could be grandfathered has done so. And that's, and what the reverse of that is, is there's still part of the smaller contractors who never played the card, who still want to.
I see.
And so I want to make sure that we don't close that door to them. So that's part of the discussion.
And your name and address, just for the record, I didn't ask you for the second time?
Yes. My name, again, it's changed since I was up, but it's Preston Love, Jr. My address also, 6021 Villa DeSante Drive.
Great, thank you. And then, Anna, maybe one more time on that point, because that is a reasonable point. I think in the permit and licensing ordinance here right now, it did have a timeframe by which someone had to apply to be grandfathered, so is that no longer happening?
Anna Bespoyasny, Planning Department. Correct. That provision to have a grandfather license expired in 2012 of September, and so we have not received any applications for grandfathered licenses after that date.
Okay. I think the point Mr. Love's making is there may be folks that didn't take advantage of that that still may qualify for that.
That may be the case.
And should that be allowed, right?
Well, yeah, that would be up to you.
Okay. And you'd be willing to sit down with us and Mr. Love to talk this through?
Oh, absolutely.
And I know Mr. Thompson's here, too, the SEB ordinance probably, too, and some of the things worth thinking about there, I think that'd be some worthwhile conversations.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. No further lights, next item.
Item 50, in ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquids storage district to be known as District Number B-209, located at 8601 North 117th Street.
Public hearing on number 50 is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 51, in ordinance to approve various purpose and refunding bonds, tax-exempt series 2021A, and general obligation refunding bonds taxable series 2021B, in the amount of $168,400,000.
Public hearing on number 51 is today, any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, items 52 through 104 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Claire Mo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0, meeting is adjourned at 4:05.